And find yourself a nice comfy chair right down front here. We've got plenty of them. We'll get going here in a few minutes. And as you can tell, we're working out a technical difficulty here. This is our second time that we're recording for broadcast the entire meeting. So technical difficulties are bound to happen. Hey, Brian. Well, it's not like us to start late unless there are people coming through the door. This was a technical issue. We still don't know that we have it solved. It's connectivity. One of these cables and cords that we don't have seconds and thirds of to swap out has given us a little difficulty. And we're going to get a little crunchiness in the speakers from time to time. So my apologies right up front. This is our second time doing a recorded-for-TV, recorded-for-cable-TV town meeting. The special town meeting a month or so ago, we did that. If you haven't ever viewed one of those broadcasts, they're not entertaining. But at least if you wanted to go over some things and look at some things, the information is there about what happened at the town meeting, who said what, what did people think. It's kind of a good resource, and I like it. So here we are doing it again, complete with whatever flaws may exist. So welcome. Thank you very much for coming. I'm Rich Peabody, your town moderator. And we're gathered here tonight for an annual town meeting. It's Wednesday, May 11, 2022, 7:00 at the Irving Elementary School. We have our town meeting warrant, which is all the articles printed in this publication that was mailed home to you. There are only a couple minor changes that were caught after it was printed and mailed. So when we get to those articles, we'll deal with the amendments and/or reading into the record as appropriate to have these things the way they're supposed to be. Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Franklin SS, Town of Irving Constables, Town Clerk and Administrative Assistant. In the name of the Commonwealth, you are directed to notify and warn the said inhabitants qualified to vote in town affairs to meet in the Irving Elementary School located at 28 North Field Road, Irving, Mass. on Wednesday, May 11, 2022, at 7:00 p.m. And there and then to bring to vote on the following articles in the warrant. And those articles are listed in your handout publication as 1 through 25. In addition, you are hereby directed to serve the above warrant and to post attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least seven days before said meeting. Fail not and make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk for the day of said meeting. It's signed by the Irving Select Board and is certified, Franklin SS, Town of Irving. I have served the above warrant by posting up attested copies as directed by vote of the town at least seven days before the time of holding said meeting, and it is signed by one of our constables, Dan Hammack. With that, I declare this town meeting to be open. The town clerk has informed me that we have a quorum, and it's necessary to report that at the beginning of every meeting. We do have a quorum. So thank you all for coming. It's good to have your participation and have you here. I'd like to momentarily recognize that we had a vote on the 2nd, was it? May 2nd? Yeah, Monday. I was out of town and I didn't vote. But there was a vote, Monday, May 2nd, for various offices here in town. And I'd like to thank those of you who ran for an office and got elected, and thank you who voted for doing that. Service to the town is something you do because you care about the town. So congratulations to the people who got voted in on May 2nd. I'd like us to take a moment here to pledge allegiance to our flag and our country. If you all please rise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. So in viewing that last one, I said, you know, I conduct these meetings kind of slow. Now, I don't want to go so fast that anybody ever gets lost, but I am going to pick it up a little bit. So like we've been doing for a while here, you've got this warrant and had a chance to read it. I'm going to say what the article is, who submitted the article, what its approval is, and then I'll take a motion to second to accept, and a motion to second. And we'll get into each one of these articles and discuss them as much as we might need to, because discussion is at the heart of town meeting, and it's what it's all about. So Article 1, Acceptance of the 2021 Town Report. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have motion as printed and a second for it. That brings Article 1 in front of us for any discussion. Do we have a discussion? I'm sure we do.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So as you know, every year we do a dedication of the annual town report. For those of you that don't know, I'm Scott Bassarush on the Select Board. Before I get into the dedication, though, I do want to just make a mention that we've just gone through and still going through a pandemic, and it caused a lot of changes of how we did business. And a lot of that change leaned heavily on technology. Remote meetings and, you know, we're talking about Zoom, and everything was online. And we had to learn very quickly how to do all of that and how to keep that running. So I want to give just a shout out to, you know, all of the IT, Tom Smith here at the school and the entire entourage that helped him keep that running. I'm sure the superintendent, principal, everybody. And on the town side, we have Jake Smith, our IT specialist, who helps out tremendously keeping this going. Brian Smith, Mariah was an integral part. They all took time to, you know, figure out what platforms to use, how to use them, how to navigate, how to train people, how to keep it up and running, run board meetings, commission meetings for people that didn't know how to do it or didn't have the capacity at the time with technology to do it. So kudos to everybody that had a hand in that, because without that, we would have been at a standstill of being able to conduct business legally and efficiently. So thank you to all of you. So the dedication. I was going to try and read this dedication without saying who it was going to be at first. And after the first line, I realized that's not going to work, because you're going to know immediately when I go back over this person's lengthy history of involvement with this town, who it is. So without further ado, the Town of Irving is proud to dedicate our 2021 Annual Town Report to Daniel Hammack. Bear with me. When you have given this many years of your life to service for the town, it's a lengthy dedication. Dan grew up in Orange, Mass., and in 1970, he married his high school sweetheart and love of his life, Kathy, who was born and raised in Irving. Right after getting married, Dan went to Vietnam, and upon returning from his service in the Army, he and Kathy made their home in Irving. Shortly after, Dan and Kathy had their daughter, Michelle. Dan decided to get involved in local government. Dan has been involved and has served the Town of Irving for 48 years. That's an amazing accomplishment. Dan has served the town in many capacities over the years. Zoning Board of Appeals, 1973 to the present day. This was the first board that Dan was appointed to as an alternate in 1973. And other than a two-month stint away from the board, Dan has remained on the ZBA and has been chair for many years and still is today. Cemetery Sexton, 1976 to 1990. Dan started working as cemetery sexton back in the day when grave sites were dug by hand with a shovel, cement was mixed by hand for placement of headstones, and mowing was done with a push mower. The Highway Department took over the maintenance of the cemetery in 1990. However, Dan continued to maintain the cemetery plot records and walk through the cemetery to help people find plots to purchase until 2010. Library trustee from 1983 to 2003, and then again from 2018 to the present day. Dan became a library trustee in 1983, and in 1984, his wife Kathy also became a trustee. The duo continued their service in that capacity until 2003. Dan became a library trustee again in 2018 and still serves as the trustee's chairperson today. Selectman, 1990 to 2003. He ran for Select Board in 1990 and served in that capacity until his last term ended in 2003. During these 13 years, he worked on numerous projects for the town. At that time, the town's administrator was only a part-time person, which meant that the board members were required to complete tasks that today's board members are not required to. He even served as the administrator for five months when the part-time administrator at that time left behind their keys with a note reading, "I quit." Dan was willing and able to add these duties to his already very busy professional and personal life to ensure the town's needs were met. Assessor from 2015 to present. Dan was elected as an assessor in 2015 and has enjoyed learning about his new role. He attended the required assessors classes at UMass and enjoys being part of the board and using what he has learned to help the residents of Irving. Finance Committee, 2009 to present. Dan was appointed to the Finance Committee in 2009 and is still serving in that capacity. He brings a wealth of experience to this role, which usually lends itself to a thoughtful conversation about where and what to spend the residents' money on. Planning Board, 1985 to 1989. He served on the planning board, and during that time, he had the opportunity to assist in researching and writing the town's very first subdivision bylaws. Constable. He was elected to constable in town in 2012 and continues to serve in that capacity today. Animal Control Officer, Animal Inspector, 2000 to 2006. And then other contributions. While these roles and titles each describe a way in which Dan has contributed to the Town of Irving, they cannot capture the totality of how he has given. Dan's contributions to the Town of Irving are expansive and hard to measure. He has been a part of many projects, initiatives, and committees, some of which include Route 2 improvements, cultural council grants, band concerts, town enhancement grant, streetlights, beautifying the town byways, signed dedication ceremony attendance, American flags and flagpoles, around-town submissions, Veterans Day at the Irving Elementary School, rag-shag parade costume contest judge, scout derbies, church support, trash pickup, horticultural contributions, and supporting local businesses. Dan replaced the flagpoles in cemeteries with ones that needed less maintenance and has been an integral part of the Memorial Day Parade since coming into town and currently serves on the Veterans Monument Committee. He has contributed in ways that most people don't think of. He pushed the town to purchase their first backhoe, which supported unifying Irving with one... Okay, sorry. I'm going to read that again. He pushed the town to purchase their first backhoe, comma. He supported unifying Irving with one area code and one zip code, addressed a leaky roof at Town Hall, assisted in Eagle Scout project, and before the ease of Internet, he even drove back and forth to the Registry of Deeds to personally look up information that the town needed in the deed records. I'm so glad we don't have to do that now, Dan. Dan has always supported the town and town activities, and that dedication shines through, which is why it is only fitting that this year's town report be in his honor. Thank you, Dan, for all your years of service, many acts of kindness, and continued dedication to the Town of Irving. The town is truly grateful for your support, past, present, and future.
Can I just say that for those of you who know me, you'll be very pleased to hear the next two words out of my mouth. I'm speechless. And it's been a pleasure. It still is. I enjoy helping the town. Somebody came in once. They want to know which board would they like to be on, and they asked which one pays the most. I said, "You're in the wrong place." I haven't made a lot of money, but never tried to, and I didn't expect this recognition. This is so nice. Thank you all so much. I caught that little emotional uptick at the end of that. Very nice, Dan. It's our pleasure to have you doing the things you're doing. Thank you very much. Hey, Dan asked me to introduce somebody else before we get into the first article. Abigail Bain, Abby. She's our library director. And Abby would like to introduce herself to you, and we're happy to have her do it.
Hi, everyone. Thank you so much for giving me a moment. I'm Abigail Bains. You can just call me Abby. I'm your new library director. I have a master's in library science from Simmons University, and I've been working the past 10 years for the five colleges and a number of the different libraries there, most recently working on Nielsen Library, another new library in the valley. I'm so happy to be here working at this shiny new library in Irving. We have some wonderful programming this summer, our summer reading program, a master gardening series, film noir, and our plant sale is still on tomorrow, and there's still raffle tickets to buy. So come on over and see us, and I left some stuff on the tables. And I think that's all I'm going to say right now, because you have more things that are really important to do tonight. Thank you so much. I look forward to seeing all of you.
All right. I got off my own rhythm here just a little bit by introducing Abby in the middle of our consideration of Article 1, the acceptance of the town reports. So that's that document we just had the dedication in, and it summarizes the activities of all the town offices and things that have happened in the town last year. Are there any questions on the town reports? No questions appearing. All those in favor of accepting Article 1, please say aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 1 has passed unanimously. Article 2 is the Authorization to Apply for Federal or State Grants. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. As printed with a second. Thank you very much. Questions on Article 2? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 2, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 2 has passed unanimously. Article 3, Authorization to Dispose of Surplus Property. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. A motion and a couple of seconds, so thank you very much. Any questions on Article 3 and what it does for us? No questions appearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 3 has passed unanimously. By the way, she didn't get introduced while Dan's dedication was going on, but this is Michelle Sullivan, otherwise known as Michelle Hammack, who was a fine student here at the Irving Elementary School for all those years. So she came up tonight to be here for this. Thank you. Article 4 is the Authorization to Enter into Compensating Balance Agreements. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. Motion and seconds. Anybody with questions on what this does for us? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 4, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 4 has passed unanimously. In the category of Fiscal Year 2023 Operating Budget, which I love the way these warrants are laid out with their categories. Article 5 is the FY 2023 General Operating Budget. The line items are listed in it with a total of $5,416,567, and it's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. A motion and a second. Thank you very much. Are there questions on $5,416,567? Yes? Thank you. Good question. And by the way, if you're looking for the background details on these operating budget line items that are in this publication that was available at the door, that's our Proposed Operating and Capital Improvements Budget for FY 2023. So I gave you a moment to consider the answer.
How's that? That sounds better. Okay. Thank you. It's definitely a concern that the Select Board and the chief have been discussing in terms of specifics around what is incorporated in the budget that's proposed this evening. In addition to the wage schedule, the step and grade system that we adopted a couple fiscal years ago, which has incorporated increases every year, we also, with the support of the Finance Committee, decided to make a 2% increase to the entire table. So all of our step and grades were increased by 2% in addition as an initial effort. During the original study and adoption of a grade and step system a few years ago, the Finance Committee and the Select Board were committed and committed to doing a thorough review three years later. That is going to be the next fiscal year. So we're going to do additional analysis, look at how the current tables compare to our peers around us. How does that continue to keep us in the market competitively for hiring, for retention of employees, et cetera? It's more complex than that, obviously, but in a short... That's some of the things that are incorporated at this point in the budget that has been presented.
Good question. Good answer. Further questions? Yes. If you like, I'd love to... Matter of fact, I should have repeated yours, although your voice carried pretty well, but for the TV.
He is loud. Just a quick question. I, in looking through the detailed budget, I did notice that there were three raises of individual employees ranging from 15 to 25%, unless I'm way off. I'm assuming it's hours, but I just wondered if you could speak about that. I figured increased hours.
Could you elaborate on specifically which sections?
Yeah. I thought I noticed town administrator. I know the treasurer was added hours, I believe, and I believe fire chief.
So the... You are correct about the treasurer. The change in hours worked, if approved, in the elected official compensation article coming up. The administrator salary and fire chief salary, the Select Board went through a process and adopted contracts for those individuals, and as part of that, there was some adjustments made to their compensation package.
Okay. So not added hours there, just the treasurer. Was that hours being added or compensated?
I don't think we want to go into calculating the hours that our town administrator spent every week, well beyond what he's compensated for in any contract and any numbers that we've seen. And the same with our fire chief, especially as emergency manager director and navigating through the pandemic, which, you know, still, although generally is often feeling better, is still with us. So there were countless hours that were definitely not compensated. So there's a lot of things that went into that discussion and that model that the Select Board reviewed, so I wouldn't... I wouldn't frame that as a reflection of hours worked, because if we got into that, then we would have to raise the compensation a significant amount higher.
Sure. That's definitely now, but I meant about the certain... Taking up the teachers here, who also put a lot of hours outside of school and... That's definitely what you're...
Fair question. If you'd like to dive into the details of the contract, we could offline, but it's not that simple of a model. Understand your question.
And thank you for asking the question. Further questions? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article Five, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Five has passed unanimously. Article Six is the FY 2023 Elected Official Compensation. They're all listed out here in the article for a total of $161,383.28. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. A motion and a second, putting it in front of us. Are there questions on the elected officials' compensation? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article Six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Six has passed unanimously. So the Irving Elementary School funding. Article Seven, FY 2023 Irving Elementary School Funding, in the amount of $3,331,186. It's submitted by the School Committee, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. A motion and a second, putting it in front of us for consideration. Questions on the Irving Elementary School budget? Yes, sir. It takes five seconds after you turn it on for it to work.
I'd just like to point out, the Finance Committee, Select Board, and the administration at Irving Elementary School and the Superintendent's Office have worked closely together cooperatively for many years now, and when we figured it out at the Finance Committee meeting, some of these next articles, we don't have any choice. The high school, the tech school, they are what they are, their tuition. The elementary school budget went up about 1/10 of 1%. So they didn't say, "Well, we can spend 2.5%. Let's spend it." It went up about 1/10 of 1%. I think they should be recognized for that.
Thank you for the input, Dan. 1/10 of 1%? Wow. Yes?
I see that the school committee... The salary of the school committee in Article Six, again, in Article...
Okay. She sees the school committee appears both in Article Six and in Article Seven. Yes? Interesting.
We have others who will correct me if I say this wrong, but Article Six sets their compensation, which has to be done by law. Article Seven funds it.
Oh, yeah. Article Six starts, "See if the town will vote to fix the sum of..." Right. Okay. I get that difference. Thank you for bringing up the question. Further question on Article Seven? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article Seven, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Seven has passed unanimously. Article Eight is the FY 2023 Secondary Education Funding, submitted by the School Committee, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. A motion and a second, putting it in front of us. So questions on this $1,477,405 article? No, no, really. I was in the band business for a lot of years, and that was never a good thing. Yes?
Do you know how many students need help in the secondary education? Do you know how many students enroll in secondary school?
So just restating your question for the cameras and microphones, et cetera. How many students are being served by the secondary education funding line item?
So I'm not sure if anyone else who's here tonight has that exact number. It was part of the discussion with the Select Board and the teams from education about that. And just to acknowledge, the initial proposal was, if I recall correctly, to increase the amount based on the projected enrollment, which is projected to be higher based on graduations from there and then graduations who would be heading to secondary. That being said, working with the team, we decided to level fund it for now and then come back and reevaluate when we have the actual final tuition numbers in the fall. And then if we need a special town meeting to additionally fund, we would do that at that time. I don't recall what the numbers are, but we can look into it, and if we come up with a number later tonight, unless someone has it handy, we'll let you know, or we can follow up after.
Good question. I understand the answer having that difficulty, how many students actually enroll in secondary education for next year. Yeah. Okay. Further question? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article Eight, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Eight has passed unanimously. Article Nine is the FY 2023 Franklin County Tech School Funding, in the amount of $530,875. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. Thank you very much. Questions on our tech school budget? And the dollars we're spending there? Hmm? Yeah, I did. There was a second, right? Over the static. I thought I heard it, but... Of course, you know, I've been joking about the hearing aids ever since I got them, and that's... That's good. These are pretty good ones, though. It does filter some of that out. Didn't filter out the pumping station that I was in the last day and a half, though. Okay. So Article Nine, Franklin County Tech School Budget. Any questions? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article Nine, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Nine has passed unanimously. Article Ten is the FY 2023 Water Department Enterprise Fund. It's submitted by the Water Commissioners, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and a second, putting that in front of us. Are there questions on the water department funding? No questions on water department funding. All those in favor of Article Ten, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Ten has passed unanimously. Article Eleven, I'm going to read just a couple extra words into it. So I'm going to read that article, and if I don't botch up the reading, and it's about how the article is funded, if I don't botch up the reading, I'd love to have a as-read motion. Article Eleven, the FY 2023 Waste Water Department Enterprise Fund, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate and transfer from available funds the sum of $974,277 to the Waste Water Enterprise Fund for Fiscal Year 2023 Waste Water Operations or take any other action relative thereto. The $974,277 is to be raised as follows. Town of Montague and other receipts, $230,470. Town of Irving, raise and appropriate, $743,877. Total Waste Water Fund, $974,277. It's submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval." We have a motion and a second, accepting it as read. That corrects the language of the article in that we hadn't recognized that it's "and transfer available funds" is part of the mechanism for how this happens. It's not all tax dollars. So Article Eleven, any questions on that? No questions appearing on Article Eleven. All those in favor of Article Eleven as read, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Eleven as read has passed unanimously. And you've got the notes on that? Okay. We have a hand? Yes. Hi. Hi, Jennifer. Come on up.
Over here?
Sure, if you like.
I have some tentative numbers for the secondary.
Good. I could see the Select Board up here going, "We heard those numbers," but I couldn't produce it right now if I wanted.
So thank you for recognizing me. Our tentative numbers in conversations with Gil Montague for total students, we have 70, I believe, 74, and we will confirm those on the October 1st report. I believe that's the correct number, but our Director of Finance and Operations is going down right now to make sure that that is the correct one. So she should be here shortly, but it's in that realm.
And did you have further question for her while she's here? Because it's great to have the resource in the room. Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Let's not confirm how these numbers are.
So the rumored numbers are... Okay. Thank you. Article Twelve, under the Fiscal Year 2023 Continuing Annual Appropriations and Special Articles Category. Article Twelve is raise and appropriate for continuing annual appropriations, and it's for the assessments, defense, assessors, revaluation, restore permanent records, town building maintenance, purchase space in the around-town, transfer to other posts, and Employment Benefit Trust Fund, grand total of $417,500, submitted by the Select Board, and the Finance Committee recommends approval. As printed with a second. Thank you very much. Questions on what this does and how it spends our money and what we're doing? Questions are always welcome, but apparently we seem mostly comfortable with what we're looking at tonight. But certainly, if you have any questions, feel free. Okay. No questions appearing. Article Twelve, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no. Article Twelve has passed unanimously. In the Fiscal Year 2023 Capital Improvement Category, we have Article Thirteen, Raise and Appropriate for Capital Improvements. The sum is $673,000, and you can see preparation for new cemetery, poplar mountain conservation parking area, emergency communications expansion and upgrades, bridge-street reconstruction, trench box and trench shield, tractor replacement, Ford F-550 truck with a plow, police cruiser and body cameras, and police cruiser replacement. It's submitted by the Select Board. The Capital Planning Committee recommends approval, as well as the Finance Committee. A motion and a second, putting it in front of us. Lot of things in this. Any questions on these items? Yes? The question is, where are we having a new cemetery? Somewhere far away from that static.
This funding is to do that exploration of sites and properties that the town may already own and see if they would meet the requirements to place a cemetery there. So there's a few sites that we're going to look at, and then if that is... If those are deemed not sufficient or, you know, don't meet the necessary specifications, then we would continue to look at where, as we are, I guess, effectively running out of available plots and we're required to have capacity. So that's... This is some of the first steps in that direction.
Anywhere but a wetland. Follow-up? Follow-up? Yes?
Question, I have this, with the current rate of inflation, supply shortages, is this number sufficient to fund all these?
With the current rate of inflation and supply shortages, is this number sufficient enough to fund these articles?
I would say that's a great question that I don't know if any of us have a yes answer to. In most cases, we either already have quotes or proposals that we can act on that are locked at this point, or they've incorporated some inflationary contingencies, which we hope is sufficient. But again, it's a little more best guess than we normally would like, but we've tried to compensate for that.
Yeah. Yeah, who could have seen 8% inflation? Not really. Some inflation, yeah, but 8%? Okay, thank you for the answer and the question. Are there further questions on Article 13? All those in favor of Article 13, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 13 has passed unanimously. I believe we have some more input on secondary education, verified numbers.
I have a pretty loud voice.
Sure.
Right now, we have 69, so that's the total.
69 students for next year.
For Gil Montague? That is for Gil Montague. Yeah, Gil Montague, full of regular education, and then Gil Montague, professional, non-61, and then 69 people.
Okay. Does that cause a follow-up question, or are you good with your information? Yep. And thank you. Over there crunching numbers, looking at papers and saying, "We've got to have a better answer to this question." All right, Article 14. Article 14 is to appropriate for wastewater capital projects. It's the sum of $66,400 for asset management plan and inventory project and for the Ford Transit Connect van. It's submitted by the Select Board. The Capital Planning Committee recommends approval as well as the Finance Committee. Motion and a second, puts it in front of us. Wow, it's just a dry crowd tonight. All right, Article 14. With no questions appearing, all those in favor of Article 14, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 14 has passed unanimously. Article 15 is a borrowing authorization for Church Street Bridge. And there's $1,600,000. Submitted by the Select Board, the Finance Committee recommends approval, and the Capital Planning Committee is not logged as having an answer here. This will require a two-thirds vote if it's going to pass. And I'm sure somebody must be wondering what we're spending $1,600,000 on.
I make a motion to accept Article 15.
Motion to accept and a second. Thank you very much for catching me on not listening up for that before I made a comment. Yes.
Just to add a comment, you noted the Capital Planning Committee did not take a stance on that, and that's because the Select Board only finalized the language for the borrowing authorization well after the final joint meeting with them. They did support, obviously, the capital plan that included this. So just to clarify why there's no recommendation one way or another there.
Just a matter of timing. All right, this is all about planning for that bridge on Church Street. Are there questions? Yes, sir.
I just wondered if there was any state money to help fund the water.
So the question was if there's any state or other funding available to assist with it. And then further, was it related to the flood? This bridge is not. It was de-rated due to degradation of the supports and decking just over time by Mass Department of Transportation, and that's why it's one lane right now. The bridge that was damaged from the flooding is the Swamp Road Bridge. In terms of funding, we're exploring a couple different opportunities that this bridge may qualify for that would help either offset some or all of the cost. The language here would just allow us, the authority, to borrow, if needed, any other funding sources that we can come up with. Before that, obviously, would be our preference, too. And I'm oversimplifying that, legal might tell me. But generally, yes, we are exploring all funding opportunities. It doesn't qualify for some of the small programs because it's too big, too small for the big programs. So we've had challenges getting there, and that's why this is how we're starting in terms of funding, but we're actively looking in other directions at the same time.
It's not like the old days. You lay out a couple two-by-sixes and spike them down to the pavement and tell everybody go slow. All right, further question on Article 15. Yes?
Do you have a line?
Yes, we do. Yes, there is.
So on the town website, there is a version that included three options for bridges. The board has since refined that, and we can post that version as well. But it's the same version that was included. It's a three-sided box structure. It's got a decorative stone stamping to it, but it will be concrete. It will be two lanes. It will have a sidewalk. We can get the final version on the website.
So on the town website, okay. I vote for covered bridge. Why don't we? Yeah, why don't we create an attraction while we're doing it? Okay, further question on Article 15. Yes?
Couple questions, one, or a question and a comment. First question is, what about the Swamp Road Bridge? Because we're going on some of these, some shit series, if you give us a 10-second update on what's, whatever, on the Swamp Road Bridge, is that something that is, can be funded through storm damage, state, or is it an update on?
It's a good forum to get an update on the Swamp Road Bridge.
It's a great question, and I'm going to refer to Section 9 in our proposed operating and capital improvement plan or budget. In the capital improvement plan, there is funding for Swamp Road... Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you, thank you. So the proposed operating, the gray cover and capital improvement budget, which is a lot of the supporting information for the warrant tonight. What is not in here to vote on because it's not funded from raise and appropriate, existing savings, et cetera, is Swamp Road Bridge and North Street wall engineering, which is the first step to getting to where Church Street is tonight, for example. We did receive storm damage funding from state, from the state, after lots of work from our representatives at the state level to get that funded. And so we got a portion of that funding, and I believe we already have it, or at least it's readily available, and we're going to utilize that to head in that direction. So that's a, is a project on the FY 23 project plan, but it's now funded from our money, fortunately, or at least we're getting some of our money back from the state to do it. And just for scope there, including the damage to North Street wall along Kia Brook as well, our estimate for the engineering is $204,300.
And then I have a comment.
Yes?
I'm not a defensive word, but maybe they're both of the interest. But I think if we have infrastructure in town and something breaks down, I think we should be like that. So folks are thinking, maybe that's a lot of money, which you, but I, or I think it's a lot to...
All right, you're saying it's a lot of money, and we should. Okay. Article 15, further question and/or commentary. This will require a counted vote unless the voice vote reveals clean one way or another. So all those in favor of Article 15, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 15 has passed unanimously, therefore achieving our required two-thirds vote. Thank you for the robust aye. In the Department Revolving Fund Annual Spending Limits, there's Article 16 saying revolving account spending limits, and it's the Council on Aging and the Board of Library Trustees and the Select Board Electric Vehicle Charging Stations. It's submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and a second. Thank you very much. Questions on the elements of Article 16 or any of what it does for us? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 16, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 16 has passed unanimously. Under the Stabilization Fund Articles, there is Article 17, appropriation for the capital stabilization account in the amount of $150,000 from free cash. It's submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and two seconds. Thank you very much. That makes it thirds, and we're good to go. Article 17, then, putting away $150,000 in capital stabilization. Are there questions? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 17, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 17 has passed unanimously. Article 18, appropriation for the general stabilization account. It's the amount of $273,000 that's going to go into general stabilization if we vote for it. It's submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. A motion and a second, puts it in front of us. General stabilization account. Any questions related thereto? No questions appearing. All those in favor of Article 18, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 18 has passed unanimously. Article 19, to appropriate for community access television, there's the local access channel operations, local access insurance, equipment for a grand total of $20,000. It's submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and a second on Article 19, and some of that is what's going on right here. We're getting access to our local cable. Like I said, I looked at the last one, I said, "Man, I'm just low and dry. I got to pick it up." So I learned a little something from that last broadcast. Article 19, then, any questions? No questions. All those in favor of Article 19, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Article 19 has passed unanimously. Article 20, acceptance of the Poplar Mountain Road layoff, layout. And it is described in great detail that if you were a surveyor, you'd need a college education to understand. It's submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and a second, putting the article in front of us. I understand we have a proposed amendment to clean up one line of text.
You are correct. Bear with me, and I'm not going to try to read this whole thing.
So I want you to, I want you to put your eyes on South Side, second paragraph, and then you'll be able to follow along with him.
And it's about the eighth line down, if that helps you. So I make a motion that we amend Article 20 as follows in the South Side section in the second paragraph, by inserting the following sentence immediately following the sentence that states, "Thence, south 26 degrees, 17 hours, 19 minutes east, a distance of 101.33 feet to a bound point 9A, period." The amendment is to add the following. "Thence, south 21 degrees, 30 hours, 30 minutes east, a distance of 161.78 feet to a bound point 10A, period."
An amendment has been proposed to insert the sentence that he just read to you. We have a second on the amendment, so we're okay to talk about it if you want to. Yes?
Somebody simplify this for, for moderator, what does it generally mean?
I guess this would be to you, Mr. Moderator. Could we consider the amendment and then discuss the overall purpose of the article? The amendment's purpose, just to explain, is to add a missing sentence of the correct criteria of the property being defined.
Well, this is the amendment that we're discussing right now because we have a proposed amendment and a second on the proposal, so we can talk about it. And all it really does is, where it says thence, you're starting at the end of the last sentence and then surveying your next direction to go. And if this thence isn't there, the rest of this doesn't work. Okay, the article as a whole, that's why you withdrew. Thank you. Sorry, I wasn't paying attention. So all those with any further question or discussion on the amendment, and then we'll get back to your question. All those in favor of amending Article 20 as was so stated, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. The amendment has passed unanimously. Now I'll entertain your question on the amended article.
I will do my best, and it'll be oversimplified, but we can go from there. The question was, what does 20 do, and what's the purpose generally, simply? It's to adopt this as a public way in the town of Irving. It's currently a county road. So as I understand that, that falls under the Franklin Regional Council of Governments, and they are willing to have us adopt it and take it on as our road. The meets and bounds of the road as it is today in the county is exactly as we are planning to adopt it for the town. And since we had flood damage and other things on that road and we need to do further work, it kind of makes sense to have it our road when we're going to do that, and will likely simplify the future processes.
Nice simplification. Good question, and here we are. We have an amended Article 20. Are there further questions? No questions appearing. All those in favor of the amended Article 20, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Oh, Article 19, the community access television. Is that correct? Your question is, is that correct, starting July 1, 2023?
That's a great catch. You are correct. That should be July 1, 2022. Protocol from correcting that at the moment, I defer to legal or the moderator.
We'd vote to reconsider. Somebody would propose it?
I make a motion that we reconsider Article 19 to appropriate for community access television.
We have a motion to reconsider Article 19 and a second. Any discussion on that motion? All those in favor, yes? This is to reconsider. This is to reconsider, then we'll amend it, yeah. But you usually catch me, so, okay. All those in favor of reconsidering Article 19, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Okay, the reconsideration of Article 19 would be an amendment proposed by somebody.
I make a motion to amend Article 19 to read in the first sentence, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the $20,000 in no sense from the PEG Access Cable Revenue Account for the purpose of operating the town's local cable access channel as itemized below beginning on July 1, 2022, or take any other action relative thereto.
We have a motion and a second, thank you very much. So there's the amendment correcting the year, so that that funding starts this year, not next year.
And thank you for catching that.
Any discussion on the amendment? No discussion, all those in favor of amending Article 19 as so stated, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Article 19 is amended unanimously. All right, I believe we were just about to start in on Article 21. Don't you love parliamentary procedure? And, yes, I'm sorry, we need to stay on Article 19 for another moment. We voted to reconsider it, then we voted an amendment to it, and now I guess we have to have one more vote to accept the amended Article 19. So, all those in favor of the amended Article 19, please signify, what? There it is, see, I am lost now. It's okay. We have a motion and a second, putting the amended Article 19 in front of us for our final consideration. All those in favor of the amended Article 19, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. And that's what happens when I get up at 2:30 in the morning in Flint, Michigan, in order to get here for a town meeting. I declare the amended article has passed unanimously, yes. Flint, Michigan, interesting place for water supply, there's stories to tell there. All right, Article 21, the semi-annual preliminary tax payment system. It's submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and a second, putting it in front of us. Are there questions? No questions appearing, all those in favor of Article 21, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Article 21 has passed unanimously. Article 22, the authorization to sign five-year contract for body and cruiser camera services. It's submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. Motion and a second puts it up here, five-year contract for body and cruiser camera services. Are there questions? No questions appearing, all those in favor of Article 22, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Article 22 is passed unanimously. Zoning bylaws, this is what I love zoning stuff. I commend anybody in this town who works on our zoning and our bylaws, because it's a tough, it's a tough world to be in to make everything 100% right. So here we are with Article 23, to amend the purpose in Section 1.1 of the zoning bylaw. And it's presented here in text, and it says, submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and a second, putting it in front of us. And I do note here, it says, please note, proposed additions are in italics and deletions are underlined and in brackets. So when this, if this passes, there'll be a new bylaw section that is amended according to those methods right there. Are there questions on what this particular one is doing for us in Article 23? No questions, all those in favor of Article 23, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Article 23 is passed unanimously. Which satisfies the two-thirds requirement, yes. Thank you. I could see Dick Newton's doing, he's doing it, too. These are my coaches right here, they make sure I don't mess something up and the state rejects the vote. Article 24, to amend definitions in Section 9 of the zoning bylaw, and it's spelled out there, and it comes down to, submitted by the Select Board and the Finance Committee recommends approval. We have a motion and a second on Article 24, putting it in front of us. Are there questions on Article 24 and what it does for us? Just like the previous article, proposed additions are in italics and deletions are underlined and in brackets. Cleaning up some bylaws. Any questions? No questions appearing, all those in favor of Article 24, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Article 24 has passed unanimously, thus covering the two-thirds requirement. And when you heard me say unanimously and barely get it out, that's, yeah, I'm feeling it now, getting tired. I did sleep some on the plane, but that's never good sleep. Article 25, to amend the use table in Section 4.2 of the zoning bylaw, and it's spelled out for you here with the same underlining and in brackets methodology, it's submitted by the Select Board and the Planning Board recommends approval. We have a motion and a second, putting Article 25 in front of us for discussion, or questions? Any questions? Yes? Okay, we're changing the use tables, and what were the deciding factors behind changing those use tables? You know, what's some of the methodology behind why we're doing that? So whoever's best qualified to answer the question?
That's probably a joint response, in terms of the different processes that were involved in all the public sessions, but I guess I would defer initially to the Planning Board Chair, Mr. Schaefer, if you want to start from the Planning Board side, as these were the kind of recommended languages that we put forward on the warrant here.
And thank you for finding your way to the microphone, it's a long walk, but...
Can you hear me okay? All right, the main changes we made were that we could allow two-family unit dwelling by right in Central Village and Village Residential. It was by special permit before. So that would mean anybody could make a dwelling into two families in any of the districts. And then the other change was, before, you could only have a four-unit dwelling in Central Village by special permit, but we wanted to open that up by special permit, also in the French King District, which really is similar to Central Village and Village Residential, which is in between Rural Residential and Central Village. So this went back and forth a few times between the Select Board and the Planning Board, and this is what the Planning Board recommended to the Select Board.
Is there a follow-up on the question, or would that cover it for you? Okay, Jake. Our IT guy today, right at the outset when the static was going on, it's like...
Let me put that hat over here. Thank you, Mike, and it was a great summary of what was changed, and, you know, that's, there was a fair amount of back and forth in discussion with the Planning Board on what path made sense, and, you know, initially, the Select Board had proposed some even less restrictive amendments, and the feedback was excellent and kind of went through this iterative process to get where we are tonight. The, if I recall correctly, and welcome feedback from the rest of the Planning Board or planning and the board here, the change for two-family units to by right, I believe was an initial recommendation from the Planning Board, the multifamily units allowed by special permit in Village Residential came from the board, and as we were looking at the RFP we put out for the former Union 28 Building, the school, that, and the area that it's in and the zoning it's in happens to be Village Residential as opposed to Central Village. So with that in mind is kind of where we started that conversation, and then in that iterative process, the recommendation was to also include French King District as a by special permit. In all cases, I think both groups wanted to be cautious about allowing expansion in the ways that these may not fit the neighborhoods, you know, the size and scale of the buildings. So by special permit allows some, you know, oversight and approval process that can help ensure that any buildings of this size are going to fit in the neighborhoods that are there. So that's, that's kind of where it came from, if that, if that kind of gives you more of the background there.
And I just don't know, was a developer chosen for that building down here, Union 28 Building, or is it for not?
So, the team, this is a team effort tonight, as you can tell, we all contribute to make sure we get this right. Initially, we had responses, we went through, you know, our grading rubric, came to a decision, and as we were working on what that final contract, you know, the steps required from there to actually award or select a winning proposal, if you will, we found that there was some poorly worded language in laws around the RFP process that required an additional public notice be run in the paper another week than we did. So we have since failed the process, and it is back out right now, and don't know if we'll see any different responses, and, you know, we'll go through, obviously, that same iterative process and grading. Should everything stay the same, and we saw the same responses of the same content and everything else that was graded, we did have a proposal that we felt fit the town and fit the location and fit the building.
Can you share that, or that has...
It's, they're all public record, yeah, yeah, so in terms of what? Four. In that building, yep, four.
Oh, sell my house and move in. Except it'll be a condo and there'll be fees, and who wants that?
Rents might be like cars, someone mentioned earlier.
Just one more question.
Sure.
It's not, it's related to this. Originally, there was going to be a request to remove the maximum amount of units for multi-units right now, if that's four, and that is not on this warrant. At the last special town meeting, I had asked if it would be here, to make sure, or on the zone, with public hearings, just curious about where that stands, that is something that the board is looking to bring back at special town meeting, some potential later.
Great question, very accurate. For the public, it's a reference to the fact that the multifamily unit dwelling definition is the same, other than the word unit that was just adopted tonight from the word family, still signifies a multi-unit dwelling as three, but not more than four units. And there was discussion with the Select Board and in Select Board meetings and with the Planning Board around changing that, either removing the cap completely from, you know, four or other changes. So you don't see it tonight, and we did not bring it forth through those same processes and discussing proposals between the groups. There were different concerns, and also by the public and et cetera, that were raised and different viewpoints and perspectives on what that could mean and how that could affect our zoning in our town, which were really good for, I think, everyone to consider in here, and so at this point, I don't know if you'll see one, and I don't know what the context would be, you being the voters. The Planning Board is, at the moment, not made a recommendation, if I recall, to the Select Board and wanted to do some more research on other towns and how they have language around this, there's been some examples that have been discussed, and spending some more research and time and thought into what change would fit our town best before making any proposal to the public to adopt.
All right, great questions. So we have Article 25 with the changes in use in certain areas and descriptions. So is there further question on Article 25? No questions appearing, all those in favor of Article 25, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed say no. Article 25 has passed unanimously, and it does satisfy the two-thirds vote, therefore. Article 9,992. Yeah, no, it looks like we've reached the end, and it's what, 827? Oh my gosh, anybody have something they'd like to share here? Yes? The French King Bridge safety improvements, I hear the diving platform hasn't been built yet? I'm sorry, that's a very morbid joke, go ahead.
I'm going to have to say that's in bad taste, I understand, but...
It's very bad taste.
It's a really important question and an important situation that we've all lived and experienced in different ways, and we can't wait to see addressed. I'm maybe not the best person to give you the answer on exactly everything, but high level, the funding has come, has, funding has been secured at the state and potentially federal level to proceed with the project. It was put out to bid, the low bid was higher than the original funding, as I recall, and they, they being Mass Department of Transportation, as I understand it, committed to finding the difference in funding and moved the project forward, and we've had at least one pre-construction meeting with the contractor, with Mass Department of Transportation, with Gill, with the towns of Gill and Irving, in understanding, you know, scopes and impacts to traffic, public safety, all of those things that a multi-year project on that bridge are going to have. So, short answer, it's proceeding. I would say the groups on that first call were focused on how do we get to a point where the safety is improved, because there is more than just that in the scope of the project that needs to be done. Unfortunately, because the decking needs to be extended to support the barriers, it will not be, you know, right on the front end or on the early side of the project to see at least those in place, but it is obviously priority to get that done before some additional work that can be done on the backside of that project, so. Proceeding, scoping time, I think we're talking years? If you want to add to that, yes, please.
Real quick, the state obviously controls the contract, so we can only report on what we've been told. It looks like they're trying to mobilize to our towns for June. There may be a slow startup, so you may start to see equipment arrive, you may start to see a more presence from the contractors and Mass Dot in town. They will start this summer and they'll focus on one side of the bridge. I believe they're starting on the north, but that could change. As the chairman explained, they have to extend the deck, so there will be a lot of construction barriers in place, and travel lanes may be reduced in the construction part. I do believe they will finish this season hopefully before snow flies on one side, and then they'll have to resume construction in the spring on the other side, so it could go into two construction seasons.
Great question and good answers, Dan, some input?
Could I just have 30 seconds to correct an error, expose a conspiracy, and ask a question? The error is mine. I told you the elementary school budget went up 1/10 to 1%. It actually went up 2/10 to 1%, which is still amazing. The conspiracy, when I stood, when you honored me when we started, I didn't see my daughter here. She drove up here from Dedham, and things became clear to me. I was thinking, who dredged up all this information? My granddaughter, a couple of months ago, told me she was doing a project for school, and each student had to ask a family member, what have they done for their community? So, and then I saw her give Betsy a sick heart a hug on the way out, and so I'm sure there was a little conspiracy there, and I had no idea, so thank you all for what you did. And my request is to encourage folks to volunteer. Some of these boards and committees don't take much time at all. For example, we need a couple alternates on the zoning boards. If there's a conflict of interest, you need to have an alternate. Sometimes we don't meet all year long if nobody requests anything. Once in a while, we meet once or twice a year. And just learning from us old guys, how it all goes is probably a good thing for the town. And just a point of interest, the Bridge of Flowers is 400 feet long. People come from all over the United States, around the world, to see it. We've been planting stuff, or some of us have been, for 20 years, from one end of Irving to the other. We've got nine miles in every direction. People will probably come from a different planet to see what we've got. If we plant azaleas, rhododendrons, daffodils, tulips, bacchusias throughout the season, people will come here. And why do you want people to come here? Taxes come from two places, business or homeowners. The more business we can encourage, people stopping at our restaurants, our stores, and coming through, they don't, tourists don't tax our schools, they just come here and leave their money and go home. So I'm working on this project to get all these things, rhododendrons, azaleas, and things planted from one end of town to the other, private property, town property, whoever it is, donating a bunch of plants. So I'd ask for any volunteers who want to help. And thank you for your time. And thank you again so much for this town report. Thank you.
You're welcome, Dan. Or you have a motion?
I actually have additional comments. I could follow that with a motion, if everyone would like. Just two quick items of business. Anyone who would like to pick up a town report, they are on the table in the back on your way out. You're welcome to grab one. And secondly, if I could just ask the Planning Board members to come up and sign the Poplar Mountain plans before they leave tonight, that would be excellent. Planning Board members, if you could come up and sign the Poplar Mountain plans that are behind our table here before you leave for tonight, that would be appreciated, and save you all a trip to Town Hall. And with that, I'll make a motion to dissolve the annual town meeting.
And we have a second on that, very much. Is there any discussion or concern about dissolving the annual town meeting? All those in favor of dissolving the annual town meeting, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed, say no. Yeah, I didn't think so. Thank you very much, each and every one of you. It's always a pleasure, and I'm happy to spend the time with you to do this. So have a good evening, and thanks for coming out.